Tyler, I hope you got that.
January thirty first, special session.
Alright, still got a couple of minutes yet?
Yep.
Thank you, Keisha. Our first people?
Yeah.
Well, we can at least, let's say.
Well, if they don't show, do they get a budget?
They know that they're, uh, they know that they're supposed to be, because Tiffany's been in contact with me this morning, so.
Okay.
We've got plenty of empty chairs, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Jake, I thought, I thought this was supposed to be the hottest ticket in town.
Well, it kind of is.
Man.
Everybody just wants to go on their own slop, I think.
Man, oh man, I feel... Playing to an empty room. Oh, come on in, come on in.
We were just talking.
I was waiting out there, and then I heard him saying something, Jake saying something about me, and I was like, okay, maybe they're already coming.
Yeah, Jake was, Jake was talking about you, Tiffany.
Good job, yeah, you're doing a wonderful job. You can sit there, and then you can talk into the mic, and then we can hear. So they can hear you. Otherwise, you stand there.
No.
Remember this is...
Nobody, nobody, the recording or nobody else, we're here, Tiff, she doesn't use the microphone.
I brought some stuff, because my stuff is confusing.
Yeah, that'd be great, we, we were talking about that, you know, how it's...
And I'll do the best I can, Rachel's not gonna be here, so.
Okay.
We appreciate you wanting to be number one.
Oh, she set it up.
So what you're saying is you wouldn't have been?
I was hoping I would have.
Wow.
No, it's fine.
Alright. Okay.
The microphone over really looks...
Alright, it is one o'clock, and we will call this special meeting, the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Grandia by remote location, in the super-secret courthouse spot.
That's right, it's not too secret. Uh, Keisha, Johnner?
Here.
Are you guys ready?
Yeah, I said here, did you not hear me?
Yeah, yeah, Keisha said here.
No, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
Sorry, yep, here.
Alright, Mark, Remy?
Here.
Steve McCollum?
Here.
Thank you.
Very good, I would entertain a motion to approve today's agenda, i.e. budget.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second?
McCollums?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Alright, very good, thank you. Uh, before we launch into mental health, and, and Tiffany is here to talk about that, I just want to, by way of kicking this off, if you look over here on this board, I wrote some things out, Jake, I don't know if you can see that or not, I hope you can. I'll read it off if you can't.
Okay, no.
So, I'll read it off, but this is what I would call the major issues list, Jake, it's like what we do everywhere, where we think about our allocation of our loss funds, compensation, board recommendation, staff salaries raises, which we will talk about corresponding to each department, but then we're also probably going to have a group discussion as board, health insurance renewal, and the structure of that renewal, our Fund Two levy discussion that we had in our last meeting, which we want to probably also have during this time period, and what can we do, if anything, in that fund? Travis Trust, which continues to sit out as a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the last thirty years, and what do we want to do with that, if anything? Levy rates and the setting of those rates, Jake, just establishing if we're staying constant, changing what we're doing. Talk about the impact of Prairie Ridge, and then the VA next year onto those rates, and then the loss of the Mental Health Fund, Fund Ten, to those rates, and then any other changes, and then a discussion on future staffing, operations, I know we've had some folks retire, we'll have folks asking for new staff, and just keeping that in our minds, so that, it's kind of a checklist there, Jake, like we always do.
Yep.
There'll be some other items that come up during the course of this discussion, we can certainly add to the list, and then when we get breaks, uh, that are not filled by a department, we can launch into one or more, or more of these, and start to, uh, put some shape, uh, to those items. Alright? Sound fair, Jake?
Yeah, it sounds good. I haven't, I haven't done one of these remotely for a while, so I, uh, you know, I can see that it's maybe not gonna be the best approach, so we have to rethink that a little bit, but, uh, 'cause just 'cause I can't see that, but if you, sorry to ask, but when you guys speak, it does make a huge difference if you're into the microphone or not, so this is something from out here, I hadn't really realized as much, so, sorry about that.
Can you hear me okay?
Huh?
Can you? Apparently not.
Now I got you, you come in really clear there.
So, yeah, these mics are direct, so you have to almost be on top of it like this.
Oh, yeah, there's a huge difference.
If I turn my, if I turn my, if I turn my head to talk to the board, you can't hear me.
Yeah, talk into the mic.
Thank you Supervisor McCollums for that reminder. Alright, Tiffany, you are here to talk about mental health, and, uh, and your department in relationship to mental health, so you've provided some, uh, handouts to the board, so if you don't mind,
Sure.
Walk through those.
Can you hear me, Jake?
Yes.
So, um, what I have given you, so, is just an outline, I have given this to Jake as well, it's a letter from the DHS, just kind of going over, uh, Senate File Six Nineteen, and what that's going to look like, um, for the first year, and, um, the sub-fund, so the sub-fund is what I've given you, I just sent it to Jake, because we were trying to figure out numbers, um, for our budget, um, so, it's really confusing. So, um, our budget's not going to look, obviously, like it normally would, um, and so, what we were told to budget from the Department of Management, because of the changes with Senate File Six Nineteen, normally we would receive tax levy dollar, but that's going to be looking different, so, we have been told to just budget for FICA, IPRs, health insurance, and, um, salary, and so, whereas normally it would be more than that, but not for this fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, so, um, how do I, I mean, I don't know what kind of questions you have, obviously, it's not, it doesn't look like...
Do you have a breakdown on your salaries, how that works? You just have a lump, so?
It's just a lump sum of all of it, um...
But like, how many employee, I mean, were you looking at you and...
So, okay, so, um, there's four of us that are employed by Marion County, two of which, um, are, so, okay. So, what was I trying to say, the, uh, hold on, I know, it's, uh, Rachel, Rachel Brittany, so...
Sorry, my bad.
So, for Brittany and Rachel, their employer of record is Marion County, and so what happens is, they get their salary, um, paid, and then, um, we get reimbursed from our region, so Katie, who is our CFO, our CFO is in Monroe County, reimburses Marion County, so then, my social worker and I get paid out of, um, our budget for Marion County. So, um, I don't have the actual numbers in front of me for the salary, but I also had to include sick leave, and you'll see under health insurance, I also had to include, um, well, you won't see that, but I'm telling you, our health insurance division and dental for all four of us. So, whereas in, um, the budget before, we would have separate COA codes, and so different line, they would be a different line item, but all of that is lumped into one sum, and that is coming from the Department of Management, telling us to do that.
So how much should you give yourself of a, of like, an increase, what's...
So, just all of us, I just didn't, just three percent.
Cool. It would kind of be helpful, if we knew what, what salaries were, but, um...
So, I mean, I can, I don't, see, I don't have, so I, our CFO's not in today, Rachel's not in today, and so, um, I don't have their numbers in front of me for Brittany and Rachel, um, but, I can calculate.
Now, don't worry about it, just, we'll, circle back, now it's only genocide.
And it may look different.
Just circle back, and get us the right numbers.
I will give you the numbers.
Yeah.
With the included, or do you want, like, what we have now, and then, if there's a three percent increase, or whatever, what that will look like?
Yeah, what your current budget, then what your, you know what I mean, what your current salaries are, and then the increase, that's generally how it is in the budget book.
I just didn't know what to expect for today, I've never done this, so.
Yeah, but, I get it.
Why is Pope County accepted out of that Senate File Six Nineteen?
That'd be a cool, what question for Rachel, I can ask her, unless you know, Mark, I don't know.
Yeah.
They're not technically a region, they're their own entity.
Okay.
Right, they're, they are, they are set aside, as they always are.
They're chosen, has that? Thought that was a positive term, chosen, okay.
What is positive? Any, any questions for Tiff?
So Tiff, we're really just looking at this next year, and, 'cause then everything's gonna change.
So, um, starting July one this year, so we will have a sub-fund, um, and so, the COA codes that are on your, the budget that I have given you, um, is for the sub-fund, 'cause our Fund Ten will go away.
Right.
And then it will be in process over the next few years.
Jake, has, have they all, have people clarified with you how you will account for Fund Ten going away, and all of this coming then by the state, you know, the state funds mental health directly?
Um, I don't know if I would say completely, from what I understand, what we try to do here is create that, as you guys see on your sheets there, it, it, there's still Department Sixties, but we're gonna consider the mental health department, and then the sub-fund that you've just talked about, we've created, um, it's, the, the technical number is zero-one-zero-zero-nine, so any money, any monies that, uh, that's what, like payroll and stuff will come out of, and then any region money is gonna come back to that, so you can see that they submitted a, you know, basically a net zero budget for next year, anything in goes out, uh, no daily expenses, things like that, uh, so, I, I don't know, I, I don't quite know or understand if some of these monies that's left in the region, you might say, uh, at the end of this year, the, the projects you guys have been talking about, or those burn downs or whatever, and if you're gonna have some left, I'm assuming is gonna go into this fund? That part isn't quite clear to me yet, but I don't know if anyone, I guess.
So the region, the region had, based on the changes in the law, I'll just say it this way, and it's gonna be not very artful, Rachel would be more specific, but out of the spend-down provisions that you see in the little chart that Tiffany provided, half, half of that money's gonna go back to the state, and half of that spend-down is coming back to the counties. At least that's what the cross-region, uh, voted for.
Yeah.
So, so far, allocations have been given to Ringgold County for towers, and I think we gave some other counties their projects, Marion County, that is about one point one million of that money, of that money coming back, which is going into the proposed restructure, uh, formation of a nonprofit. Now, that's still a work in progress, so I think you're operating really on two paths, and the, the current path is what the law says we are going to change, given the current structure of the region, and if we get the other piece approved, and get that done, that will change slightly the structure of mental health, but it won't change the funding stream. Okay?
Yeah, so I didn't, just wasn't sure if that would be this, if a, a separate fund would be set up, or, uh, how that works, that would be maybe, because this is a vegetarian fund at this point, so, we could adapt, whatever works.
Yeah, it'll, we'll have to kind of work through the mechanics of that, Jake, but the funding, if we do get the nonprofit set up, that nonprofit would become the service provider, cross-region would contract for services, all of the employees of the region would then become employees of the nonprofit. So unlike today, uh, Tiffany and the whole team would report directly to Rachel, which right now, right now, they do not do that, they have...
So the funding would go through that nonprofit, uh, as well, and would even come to the county?
Correct, that is correct.
No.
Okay. But, that's still a work in progress. But we have to have, we have to have a solution by June, because the spend-down, uh, you have to have that money encumbered by that time.
So I think unless you guys know of anything different, or Tiffany knows of anything different, I think we've created the structure that's required at this point.
Yeah.
For this, and if we need to do more, please let us know when.
I, yeah, I agree, Jake, I think you'd say, you leave the structure as is for now, and Tiff can provide some additional, uh, background on salaries. What I'd like to know, Tiffany, is our caseload. If you could just tell the board briefly where this has gone, Marion County specific, if we look at year-over-year change in caseload, how are we serving our residents relative to the expenditures that are referenced on the sheet?
You gonna hold that? You gonna hold that?
So are you wanting to, are you wanting to know, like, how many current day we have on our caseload for Marion County specifically? Or are you asking, like, what time?
Have we gone up on our caseload, have we gone down on our caseload?
Yes, I would say yes.
Have we gone up in severity, the types of things we're dealing with, what are we dealing with?
So we also, so now, our children's coordinator, she also has a caseload, so I would encompass that as well.
Sure.
And so, um, I know that she's been busy, and I can, guessing, the severity of the cases that we're seeing, I would say are probably about the same, we see a lot of homeless individuals, um, and I've talked with you about that before, and I know that we have had, like, a group of different individuals who have sat in on, I wouldn't call it necessarily a coalition per se, but, um, a group of concerned community members of how we can solve this problem of homelessness, um, and so we've had members from public health, from, uh, from the region, from the city level, I mean, we've had the mayor there, because of just the different things that the city, um, have put into effect now, um, as far as the landlords, and like, the different, they have to pass inspections and things, and the cost of that, and, um, individuals becoming homeless because landlords are selling the buildings, and then new landlords who have not rented them, or they, um, have sold and told them that they have to be out, and so, um, there's funds out there for housing, to get people housed, but now we're running into, where are they gonna go, at least for Marion County, and it's, we've had, um, from the Central Iowa Shelter Services, someone also come and speak, uh, one of our meetings about that, and what they're seeing, and then that's across the board, they serve, um, on a call, the Rolling Hills Coalition, I think there's like seventeen counties, and they're seeing that across the board as well, so, um, severity, I would say, is about the same, other than like the homelessness, I don't know if that answers your question, um, and then obviously with families, like with children, um, we weren't targeting them as much because we work with adults, not that if someone with child and a family came in needing help, that we couldn't refer them somewhere, but, and Brittany, our children's coordinator serves all seven counties, so not just Marion, but all seven counties.
Very good, Keisha, Steve?
Tiffany, it's just your, you and your social worker, do you have admin help at all, at this point?
No, I did not hire, no, I just took that on, I just took that, those roles on.
Okay, alright, yeah, no, other than just the breakdown? For us?
Oh, for the salary, yeah. Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Steve?
Uh, it just sounds like the new laws made it a complicated process.
It has. Yeah, 'cause there's not, and I don't know from Jake's standpoint, but, um, a lot of clarity from the Department of Management, there isn't. I mean, there's been some, but it's, it confused me.
And it still doesn't address the core problem we've had with, with this mental health reform since its inception, which is, uh, when you're dealing with the law enforcement side, so what we're attempting to do with the nonprofit is solve for that. Our meeting with Senator Edler last week was very productive, and, you know, I want to thank him for taking time out of his busy schedule to do that, but, uh, they're trying to, they're trying to work on some things at the state level, uh, in terms of opening up beds, but at the same time, they need counties to come up with creative solutions, because the, the core of the problem is here, and how do we solve for that, so the nonprofit's gonna attempt to address part of that concern, um, but again, still a work in progress. So, Tiff, thank you, anything you want to add?
I was just going to add to what you were talking about, about the different legislation that they, unless, okay. Okay, so, there are, let's see, so there's House Bill, uh, Five Thirty-One, and that is to increase the current capacity of, um, the independent and Cherokee mental health institutes by fifty percent. The bill will add thirty-two adult beds and fourteen adolescent beds for Iowa's most difficult-to-place mental health patients. Adding psychiatrists, House Bill Five Thirty-Two, legislation is to fund twelve psychiatric presidents per year. As a state, we rank forty-fourth in the country in psychiatrists per capita. This bill will help increase the number of psychiatrists trained in Iowa. The mental health loan, or mental health provider loan forgiveness, House Bill Five Thirty-Seven. It will add one million per year to expand loan forgiveness opportunities to continue to retain new prescribing mental health providers in Iowa. And then psychiatric intensive care unit, House Bill Five Thirty, is a bill to require the Department of Human Services to establish a Medicaid rate for those needing a higher level of inpatient psychiatric care. And so that's...
So that's good stuff, very good.
Be interesting to watch, see what legislation does.
Any other questions for Tiff right now? Steve?
Nope.
Alright, very good, Tiffany, thank you. Thank you for, uh...
Thank you, Tiffany.
Taking a swing at it, very good.
Good job.
I was just trying to figure out, joking, I was joking earlier when I said I didn't want to do this, 'cause it was a, how am I gonna explain this to make it make sense? 'Cause we're still all kind of...
We're not that scary.
Oh, it's just, I didn't want to say that.
Kind of hard to, it's kind of hard to respond, I mean, we don't know what direction is going.
Very good, thank you.
It's Tiffany, I updated your numbers, uh, from what you sent me on that email, so I'll email it out to you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna need your phone call from the access center today.
Oh, I hope it's not that, dang. Okay.
Thanks, Tiff, alright, Mr. Ball? Very good, Counselor, thanks for coming. Our annual foray into the budget.
Certainly.
Could you maybe just give us a quick rundown, high points?
Sure.
What you've done to fill in, uh, salaries and some of those key items?
So, just so you guys have a little bit of an overview of where things are at, at the county attorney's office, and then by extension, crime in the county, as well as all the other things my office does. We filed thirteen hundred and four cases last year, uh, and I know oftentimes people want to know where, what kind of cases were those, and I can answer any specific questions, the majority continues to be the top three, uh, driving while suspended slash driving while barred, that was two hundred and six of those cases, a hundred and three were drug-related cases, both possession and higher, and eighty-five were OWIs, or DUIs, depending on where you grew up, I would indicate of the eighty-five, fifty-two were firsts, which, you don't want to say eighty-five OWIs is a good thing, but it does appear that the significant number of subsequent OWIs is not as high as it has been in years past. In addition to that, from a collection standpoint, uh, we, I think, rebounded nicely this past year. Uh, we collected four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and that resulted, based on the equations with the state, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars being returned to the general fund. So, with that being said, I think like most of, uh, my colleagues, my budget is pretty much exclusively driven by salaries and benefits, I would note I've continued to be happy with the fact that at least as it relates to Fund One, my budget for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three still remains less than what it was in eighteen, nineteen. So from that standpoint, I'll answer any specific questions you guys might have, uh...
Very good, thank you, Counselor. Steve, Keisha, any questions for Mr. Ball?
Hey, Ed, on those cases, does that include any, the, like, the dismissed ones, or when you're looking at the bigger picture? Yeah, I just hear, like, like if you have thirteen hundred and four that you filed?
Sure.
Yeah, was there, I mean, is a number of those dismissed, or are those all prosecuted? That's what I asked, I mean, that's what I guess the bigger question.
I, I don't have the breakdown of that, I think that there, it's important to keep in mind the difference between dismissed cases and dismissed charges.
Okay.
Okay, so keep in mind that when we, what, like, all county attorney's offices across the state, more than ninety-nine percent of all cases are handled by way of a plea bargain, we said we don't, we try approximately seven to nine cases a year. We probably, quite candidly, can't do a whole lot more than that, just from a standpoint of the number of jurors that are available, as well as, uh, just the logistics of doing the trial, for lack of a better term, so, and the reason why I, I caution that is, and I can say, if you look at the sheriff's numbers, you know, we have the new portal that's online, you can see that last year the sheriff arrested eleven hundred and fifty-seven people, uh, and that resulted in almost forty-seven hundred charges. So, most people who are coming to court, so I'll give you an example, on that OWI, for example, person gets an OWI, nine times out of ten, there's a company violation that brought that person to the attention of law enforcement, so, they were driving that headlight out, they didn't have license plate, they were swerving, they were speeding, whatever it may be. Those are additional charges that most likely in a plea bargain, I'm gonna concern myself more with the OWI than I am with the headlight being out. We don't very often just flat dismiss cases a hundred percent, does it happen? Absolutely. If we don't, if we have a, a case where it's essential that we have a witness to testify, and the witness is not choosing to participate anymore, that's probably gonna result in a dismissal, but if you want the specific numbers of cases that were flat dismissed, I can tell you, I'm aware, uh, of one this year, for example, that we dismissed where, uh, was an individual that was charged with a a bad check, uh, forgery, uh, the witness, or, excuse me, the victim was Hy-Vee. That gentleman is, was charged, was, uh, going to be imprisoned in Missouri until twenty-twenty-six, so the question is, does it make a whole lot of sense to go get that person, uh, bring them back, and go through Interstate Compact for those type of issues?
Ed, you said that your budget ask was less this year than it was in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen?
I'm saying as it relates to Fund One, which is...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I can't keep up... Yeah, I, I can't keep up with the insurance premium increase over the last five years too. But from a standpoint of what I can control, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, we used seven hundred and three thousand dollars. My ask is six ninety-two, nine thirty-one for this year.
I'll page you that on.
That's, it's on page five.
Page five.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, oh, I've seen the numbers on, on the first page here, I was trying to, I was trying to relate to that.
Sure.
So it just, if you wouldn't mind, walk through the salary increases that you've got listed.
Sure.
Just from a percentage standpoint, give us some kind of a rationale to that.
Sure. And it, quite honestly, it's, uh, what do similarly situated people make in the other counties? So, by way of reference, Jasper County has four full-time assistants. Their pay raise is seventy-two thousand to a hundred and five thousand. Uh, our good friends in Warren County have six full-time assistants. They're lowest paid. Assistant County Attorney makes ninety-four thousand dollars. Their top makes a hundred and sixteen. In Polk County, which I understand is not really comparing apples to oranges, their lowest paid Assistant County Attorney comes in the door, a baby lawyer at eighty-five, and their top, uh, assistant or bureau chief is what they call them there, make a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So, from a standpoint of where we're at, I put ourselves lower than those people I compete against to, for staff. And I'm, I'm pleased with the staff that I currently have. We didn't have any turnover last year. Now, I'm mindful, at least in my opinion, that it's only a matter of time until Jared becomes a judge. He was a finalist two times ago. Uh, uh, he didn't make it out of committee the second time, but, uh, that's their loss. Uh, and so, quite honestly, I'm, I, I recognize that, uh, and as where he's at, just to be clear, he would be the third line item from the top of page one. He's still less than eighty-five percent of my salary. So, even from that standpoint, I've given uh, where I'm at for, for raises, and I, I recognize I'm at between eight and twelve percent increases. I recognize that. You know, I keep in mind that Social Security's COLA was five point three zero this year. Uh, and so, I'm looking at raises on top of that number if the federal government's saying it's a five percent increase. So, that's where I'm at, uh, from my standpoint. I know there's been some questions in the past uh, concerning my, uh, victim services person, and I just point out that, uh, in Polk County, they make seventy thousand. In Warren County, they make sixty-three. And at DA G's office, that person makes eighty-one thousand. And in our case, I'm asking that person to do two full-time jobs. With a straight face, I could come in here and say, victim services and collections, we would, could be served by two people. I'm asking one person to do both those jobs.
I have a question on your admin help.
Sure.
Just looking at the overall, and what, you know, your eight point nine, and then the twelve. I mean, when we look at the bigger picture, and I'm just, I'm just talking openly here.
Sure.
You know, when looking at admin, I mean, is it because your, your department is, I mean, that's higher than most of our admin positions?
Sure.
It's, how do we go about justifying that? Do you, you see what I'm asking? Because we have other admin that, you know, are in the forty thousand dollar range, but, um.
Yeah, I, I consider my two admin people legal secretaries.
Yep.
They don't just do answer the phones or meet people at the counter. Uh, and so from that standpoint, if you recall, one of the people I hired from Polk County Attorney's Office, uh, and that person, I didn't pay them anymore. I, I matched their salary. So, I, quite candidly, I, I'm not going to speak to what other departments do. I'm, I'm paying what is less than the going rate for a competent legal secretary with ten-plus years of experience. That has specialized knowledge, training, and experience, uh, that's able to pass, and I'm not speaking down to anyone, able to pass some of the background checks that are required to be, to use the software that we use. Those types of issues. So, I, I feel confident, but those salaries for my support staff, I've now been the county attorney for twelve years, they're less than what I was paying my support staff in private practice twelve years ago. So.
Right, and I, and I, I mean, this is the struggle. I mean, would you look at, um, you know, the eight point nine or things like that? Um, how do we say, okay, how do, how do, and this is me speaking. How do you look at it and say, all right, Ed's department deserves this, but the other departments, I mean, sustainability, that's, I mean, that's the bigger picture when we're looking at.
Sure, so when we look at those numbers.
Further down the road.
Right, absolutely. I, I understand completely. So, bear with me for a second, because if I have some of the numbers wrong, you have about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar more in Fund One, you have about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more in revenue in Fund Two. You have five point one million dollars in the bank in Fund One, you have about four million dollars in Fund Two. My view and my ask for my department is that we invest in the people that allow our citizenry to be protected and do the very best job that we can. I would encourage you to pay your employees, in my opinion, what the going rate is. I'm not coming here and saying whether or not I, I'm making this, you know, ridiculous ask. I'm saying, here's statistically what it takes to employ these people, uh, compared to my competitors who I compete against. Now, to answer your question, is it sustainable?
That's, that's, I mean, when I'm looking at it, that's the hard.
Are we talking in the next thirty-six months, or are we talking in the next hundred and twenty months? I mean, I think from a statistical standpoint, if we just run the math, and that's Mark's forte, uh, the answer is yes. The, the answer is, if we're having that frank conversation, from a standpoint of, and I remember, Mark, you made the comment, probably what now, five years ago, what is the right reserve amount? What is the amount of money that we should be having in the bank? I mean, it's interesting, just even when we talk about the ARPA money, for example, that we're getting, I was, you know, we have six million dollars in the bank, are we tied to where we can put that from, instead of getting point oh to five percent? But I also, when we start, started to look at those numbers with Michaela, I didn't, I was not appreciating. The banks are great when you give them money, they're not thrilled with you when you remove it. So, I mean, to answer your question, I, I look at, I have not spent a lot of time like, like Jake and you folks have, looking at the total ask of the county. I also recognize the total ask, uh, does not bear a lot of relationship to what the ultimate amount is. You know, because we're, we're, as a whole, about a three point eight to what, four and a half percent we don't spend. So, from my perspective, Keisha, at least as I look at it, the best thing we can plan for, I think, is four years. I think anything beyond that is kind of pie in the sky. We don't know what the interest rates are going to be. We also don't know who's going to be in power in the White House. And we also don't have any idea when this economy is going to recover, notwithstanding what the left is telling you. So over the next four years, is this sustainable? Absolutely. I, I don't see any, I'm not an actuary, I'm not sitting here putting paper and pencil, but just roughing your numbers. You guys don't have any significant, from my perspective, concerns for the next, what, thirty-six months, the bare minimum?
Right, and I, and I look at it as, I mean, I look at the future of, you know, if we're not here. And I, I mean, I get, you know, we don't know what the future is. I mean, I do know that we have probably, um, scientifically, people have said, plan for another pandemic in the next five years. Those are types of things that we have to think about, and if we're not here, um, I just look at.
Who's not here, Keisha?
If we're not here, as a board, meaning like, as, as us. So I look at this and say, all right, but is it going to become such an increase that is, can you sustain that? Because now we, we're getting a separation. We're getting an admin level that's significantly higher than everybody else.
Well, let me, let me redirect that just for a second, Keisha, because you, I mean, it's an excellent point. I mean, from a board standpoint, Steve, do, do you have any thoughts on sustainability?
I have concerns.
I mean, we're kind of putting Ed on the hot seat here to answer some big, broad.
It, no, it is, and it's just a conversation.
Because he's first off, and you see his numbers, and you see those percentages. And that's probably not going to be dissimilar from some of the other departments that we see. So, when we think sustainability, when you look macro at our Fund One and Fund Two, to Ed's point, well, what does that give you from a reserve standpoint to be able to sustain competitive, uh, salaries for a certain period of time? What does that give you? And I don't know if you guys, Steve, I don't know if you've thought about this question, uh, in depth yet or not.
I, I thought of it at high level, but not in depth, because I was like, just like Ed said, I'm a fortune teller either. I don't know what, with the next, I don't know what the next six months, I don't know what the next four years are going to do, but I do have concerns of sustainability. I mean, I, I would be admiss if I didn't, you know, I think we'd all, we'd all be. If we, you know, if we couldn't sustain what we're offering.
Right.
And I think it also comes to a point of, where does it become some of these positions? And I'll ask you this, Ed.
Sure.
Because these, and this is questions we'll ask others, where do you think that that is, that they've, they've, like, talked out? And now they're just going to get their increase?
Sure, and I think that's, and I, I have said to this, this board in the past, one of the first things that I asked for when I became county attorney, and I had, I knew I had to replace a staff member, is I called my colleagues and I said, well, how do I even start the analysis of what do I pay? Because it, it can't be just based on what someone else in the office is making. And they said, well, call HR, they have it all benchmarked for you. Uh, uh, you know, I, I don't agree with that you should have, it, I shouldn't be able to hire someone who works in the county because I can pay them more money to do virtually the same job. So, I mean, I'm not, I'll be the first person, I will, I will stand up first and say, I look at what my wife does in, in HR, and every three years, she spends about six and a half months just benchmarking salaries of competitive so that this isn't a conversation that's being had. Here is what a legal assistant one and a legal assistant two make. There, and here's their salary range. And when you get to, you know, uh, the, the best example is the Attorney General's Office. The, the, the reference of their crime victim witness coordinator, that that person right now currently makes eighty-one thousand, but they cap at eighty-four. That's, they have a step system. And, uh, I certainly, as an elected, uh, and for whoever's going to occupy my seat after me, uh, which could be as recent as, as next year, depending on what the voters choose to do, it would be helpful to have that type of benchmarking. Uh, but, but we don't. And so I'm now at the place where I'm simply going to say, it is hard. It is hard to find attorneys. I'm going to speak to attorneys first, then I'll come to administration's desk. You know, one of the conversations that, and, and one of my assistants had a conversation where a person said, what's it going to take for you to leave the county attorney's office? Because you can make double what you're making right now in private practice, in the personal injury world. Which is a different analysis than what we do. The, Ed, so from an attorney perspective, I'm not paying outrageous amounts of money for my staff. In fact, I'm paying them less than what they could make in the conversation I've had before. From where they live, Joy, who works in my office, lives in Marion County. But Jared and Andrew and Ross do not. They're driving good distances, uh, to come to work because they like the environment of working in Marion County, and I, and I'm proud of that culture and that environment. Now, to your question about support staff, I, I would say, you know, Sioux County is really interesting to me. Uh, because I, I had a conversation with Thomas, who's the county attorney up there, because we use each other as examples all the time. And he's going from two full-time uh, assistants to adding a third based on my numbers. They have six legal secretaries in the Sioux County Attorney's Office. So, uh, from a standpoint of number and volume, uh, everyone organizes slightly differently. But what I'm paying is less than comparable legal secretaries. And from the victim witness coordinator position, I'm paying them very competitively with what they are, and quite honestly, mine's better than everyone else's. Mine is recognized by the state. The person who's, gets, gets headed, asked to run those groups of similar people, she's the person who's being called to ask to talk about training, so. Look, I get it. You guys have to decide, why should Ed's secretary be paid more money than insert other elected officials? And all I can tell you is, I haven't picked pie in the sky numbers. I've gone out and done my benchmark. This is what it is. I, I'm not, not blowing sunshine. The numbers are what the numbers are. And quite honestly, it would terrify the living heck out of me to have someone leave right now, because I recognize it's probably going to cost me in excess of twenty to thirty thousand hours to hire someone new, get them trained, send them to the right trainings. And I still, these are people I got to trust. And this is the one thing I would say compared to maybe some other of the jobs. If my secretary blows a deadline, a victim probably doesn't get justice in their case, because we blew a filing deadline. It happens. It happens to all of us at one day or another. But I can, I feel fairly confident that if there's a screw-up in my office right now, it's because I made it, not because my staff did.
So, Ed, I got one other question. So, I know, your twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget, you know, obviously, that final was like roughly seventy thousand dollars, um, you had left over in your budget. I mean, I am not opposed to, I guess, in regards to what your attorneys, I get that. I get that, that you want to retain, retain them. Um, I get that it's, it's difficult to be able to find county attorneys. We, you and I have had that discussion. Um, going out and trying to get, you know, them to come. I do know that it's probably, people come because they don't want to necessarily do the billable hours. I mean, you know, and if they have, you know, children and things like that. But you can make more money in the private practice. That's, that's, that's common. You know, and I, I guess I'm going to pose this question to you. If you have some extra in your balance, I mean, and if you're concerned about those county attorneys, why haven't you used some of that? To increase, I mean, you know, because we've talked before. I mean, and in the past, you've said, well, you know, you've proved my balance. You proved it, so it's kind of my, it's my general fund. I can, I can do with it what I, what I want. But I, I posed that question to you.
Well, the first thing I would say is, I think that there's an element of intellectual dishonesty for me to come to you to say, hey, I don't know if this year or next year I was going to have an increase in my pro-law or switching to a new software. So I, I asked for X amount of money, and you afforded it to me, but I didn't spend it. So at the end of the year, I increased everyone's salary by fifty thousand dollars, only to come back down the following year. That, that to me is not, I mean, look, I can tell you that when I took office, my predecessor gave, uh, the assistant who was working for me, like, a sixty-five thousand dollar raise. Because they went from part-time to full-time, and Mark Wallace had left, and another attorney was still there. I, I'm not, I'm not going to play games with that. The issue is if I need it, I'm going to use it. I always keep in mind, what is it going to cost if I have a major trial that happens? Uh, versus if we don't have a major trial. Now, we are fortunate, this past year, we successfully prosecuted a murder case, but we got to do it in our own county. There weren't the need for outside experts. Uh, so from that perspective, Keisha, I don't, I mean, at the end of the day, I understand your question. But I'm going to come in here and I'm going to tell you what my employees' salaries are going to play, be. I'm not going to play games. Uh, and I hope my colleagues, other electeds, don't either, that we come here and we say, I want you to pay fifty thousand dollars, but in November, when I know I have a little extra money, I'm going to go to Jake and ask him to bump up the salary. Now, maybe that's a heck of a great deal, because maybe I have, I have the potential of having my employees get a quarter at a higher salary level. It's something to think about. I hadn't given it any thought at this point.
But it has been made, I mean, the comment has been made, and it's just not you. I have, or heard people say, you approved my general fund. You approved it, so it's, it's mine. I can do with it what I want. And that's, that's the comment. So that, I posed that question back to you in that, because that's what's been posed to us.
Jake, what would that mean from an auditor standpoint, though? It's not just approving the general fund, we approve the line items that they are attached to. So if Ed said, hey, I've got seventy K left, I'm just going to jack everybody's salary eight percent at the end, without supervisor approval, what's that going to mean from an audit?
Well, so, nothing, again, a couple different, taking it from a couple different, uh, directions here is, it, uh, the, the overall budget is the one area that you guys, that the board set for departments, and, you know, then, I think there is some discussion, uh, within that. But nothing would happen. So if there were going to be a pay raise, all pay raises still go through another board of supervisor meeting. So, um, that's where it's always kind of, uh, it's not just, we don't just submit something and it gets approved, because again, the payroll gets approved again. So there may be a, a point there where you don't want to do it. From an audit standpoint, nothing would happen on payroll unless there was the appropriate signed pay changes and, um, you know, through, through HR and then, uh, through the board of supervisor meeting like we're doing, like, like they do now. So, it's kind of a two-stage process that always has some, some rubber friction. I have a budget. I want to do what I want within that budget, be it there are some other follow-up approvals, if that makes sense. But they would all have to have the signed, the signed processes, just like we do if it's July one or December thirty-one, we, you know, so those processes would have to take place.
No, that's, that's good. That's kind of the answer I thought you'd give, because, yeah, I really wanted to bring it back to Ed's point. No, that's that's good, that's kinda the answer I thought you'd give, because yeah, I really wanted to bring it back to Ed's point about transparency. It, even though it would go through another supervisor process, either the consent agenda or some other type of meeting. It would be a little, I think, a little disingenuine to say, oh, by the way, here's my salary increases at the budget. I've got seventy thousand left and now I'm gonna give another raise on top of that. I've never had anybody make that comment to me, so I don't. That's a unique.
So, I've had that it's it's my budget.
I've heard that I've approved my budget, it's my budget.
Because we can.
But not ever applying it back to salaries, I've never heard that.
Well, because we have had instances where, I mean, just in the past in general, and I'm not picking on Ed. I'm just saying, in general, where, you know, we can say we recommend three percent. But well, I mean, at the end, when they look at it as a manager, you know, as an elected, um, they'll look and they and it's increased. So, I mean, you know, and we we've allowed it, and it is that is equally my fault because I have not brought it up, yes, I will say that, that's, you know.
But I don't know what that means, if we. We allow three percent to Ed, cause I'm totally in favor of this. If his gross amount, if his gross amount is three percent, and Ed decides to give somebody a five and somebody a two. And it still amounts to a gross amount of three, I'm fine with that, that's his discretion.
At a bucket, yes.
He knows his staff better than we do. We've always encouraged that. That's part of managing.
Right, and I am in, I, and that's the next thing I was gonna go to, I am for doing buckets, I like that, I think that giving them the. Um, this is your, whether it's whatever we may determine at at the end of budget sessions, saying this is your bucket. And then if you wanted to give somebody something, whether it's a two or a three or whatever it may be, yeah.
I think, I think the bigger, at least my perspective, and this isn't just, this is gonna be Ed, this is gonna be everybody that comes to the door. There is a, the salary asks are going to be higher from a percentage basis than we've seen in the past. And whether it's based on what social security did by saying five, largest increase they've done in a number of years. For social security recipient recipients, which I was a little nervous about that one, Ed.
Don't know, I.
Cause it can go away too, right? Or whatever that other, some people will argue inflation, which we can all have a debate on what that means. Uh, since that's a pretty esoteric uh concept. But we're gonna get higher numbers and we've gotta start thinking as a board, I think that what Ed said is going to be the appropriate question. How do we retain talent? How do we pay people based on where salaries are going, whether it's the public or the private metric? And we're gonna have to come to some numbers to say, we're comfortable that the this is what the job's worth presently. And whether that's an eight percent or a four percent, whatever that number is.
Even, oh, that amounts to, you know, you're talking about a bucket, it it just makes the bucket bigger.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
And you guys spread it out. Not, you know, you or who, any other, any other department, they just spread that bucket out, but the bucket ask is gonna be significantly higher.
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna have to regu- I I'm more comfortable regulating the gross amount of dollars. And say, Ed, here it is, I, this is what we give you for raises, and you've got some percentages here.
I'm more comfortable with that too.
Al allocate accordingly.
I'm more comfortable with that too, because I'm not, I'm not in a position to judge.
Right, we don't oversee that day to day, yeah.
Right, I'm I'm not, I can't, I can't say specifically Jer-. Ed and I could have a discussion on salary ranges and what current competitive rates are and it would be, you know, both have legal backgrounds, we can do that. But I'm more comfortable saying, you know, whatever X salary bucket is for staff and Ed allocate. As as uh, as he sees fit based on that salary bucket. Um, for salaries. And and we go from there, but.
And my my, for what it's worth, my total ask is a three percent increase over last year.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, no, and I'm I'm not, I mean, I.
Yeah, I was looking at the gross dollars. But still, I I I do wanna come, Keisha's point is right, salary inflation, if you just get the three percent, that's fine. But salary inflation for the jobs can eventually eat a hole in your pocket. And so she's she's right about that, and we're gonna have to kinda think about that as we go through the other departments as well, so. That's a, that is a fair question. Uh, when we say, what is a sustainable number based on what we think the future holds for property taxes? It's our only source of revenue, right, so.
Which are based on an inflated number.
That's the, that that hits the nail on the head because they can go down too.
Yes.
You know, so.
And I I guess, in the bigger picture too, I look at it and I don't, I mean, I've heard, I've heard employees say. Gosh, I remember those years where we didn't get anything, and I really don't want it to be. One year where it's inflated and then the next year, the property tax, I mean, you know. Um, the assessed value goes completely down and we're looking at not giving anything and that that doesn't help morality.
Three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of new money is not a lot of money.
No, it's not.
When your, when your, when your health insurance increases two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. No, all good points, Ed.
I thought we were gonna have a conversation, I was ready for the comp board discussion, not even.
Well, I was gonna say something to that.
Okay.
That is, uh, the the your employees, the employees wages, it's one thing, that's one animal.
Sure.
But then the elected, the elected numbers are another animal. Based on legislation.
Well, I thought, Ed, you were gonna say that you were gonna dissuade your comp board recommendation and.
Not allowed under Iowa law, only you can do that. Or Clark, or Guthrie, the ones that have already gone before us.
What did they do?
Uh, Appenous, uh, on who? Uh, for county attorney, Appenous got ten, Carroll got ten point eight percent increase. Uh, Des Moines, or I'm sorry, Dickinson got six, Guthrie got twelve, Washington got twenty.
I don't have a, can we put the comp board up there so we can see that, ready, do we have that? Otherwise, I gotta find it.
We have it, yeah.
I was kinda leaving that as a separate discussion, Ed, but since you brought it up.
Do you guys have copies?
We have a separate sheet.
I I just printed that out here, sorry, this one too. We can make a copy of that.
All right.
So I just, if you.
So. I'm just gonna look here real quick here.
Recommendation is a hundred.
Well, that's the, that's the reduced guy, yeah. So our comp board went eight point five eight for for you, Ed?
Yes.
Yep, that's what's on this, but and that's what you put in here.
Yeah, Ed's got that in here.
So if I do what those other counties did, then I I leave the sheriff the way it is?
Well, I'm not gonna pick his battles, I'll just say that it does appear. You know, you look at sheriff increases, whether or not it's Guthrie at twenty-one, Crawford at twenty. Fifteen for Carroll, seventeen for Siro, Gordo thirty-five for Washington. So. Yeah. The issue, and I I.
What was the, what was the thirty-five percent of Washington, what was the dollar numbers?
I I don't have that, this is just from the. Yeah, I don't. I'm not gonna pick the sheriff's battles for it.
Okay.
Well, it's not the sheriff's battle, it's the compensation board's battle, it's like I, it's like being blackmailed, Ed, that's what I feel like, I really feel that way.
Or or the flip side here, let me just take a second, I'm not gonna convince you, but here's at least the argument I would make, is that our county sheriffs. I can't think other than the major cities, Des Moines, where you would said city of Des Moines. Is the majority of the population of Hope County, although that may not even be true anymore. But if you look at it, should the sheriff be paid less than the city? Police chief in the city that they're in? Now, that's an interesting question, we can have that discussion, I would say, though, that the sheriff maintains a jail, maintains a civil service side. And runs a police.
On the budget that's provided. What's that gotta do with his salary?
How many people do you think they manage compared to others, if you're running a jail and you're running a civil service side? Compared to running a police department that has fourteen officers?
I get that, Ed, I get that.
But it is an apples, it's not apples to oranges, it's apples to Toyota, compared to what the responsibilities are.
I'm I'm not saying that somebody does or does not deserve it, I'm just saying the way it's going about getting done is really irks me.
Yeah, I can't disagree, I think the presentation and I think in the way it's it's come, I think, um. Sometimes in these positions, I think, uh, we have to think about. Um, and even as my father being the sheriff, I mean, I put my, I mean, I asked my father that question. And he's like, no way would I ever consider to put myself at a seventeen and a half percent, and I asked him that just frankly, um. And if I can't give that to the rest, and this is how, this is how a lot of them think, I mean, I guess an older generation, maybe than that, maybe that's my father. Um, if I can't give that to my road deputy, why would I take that? That was the question that was posed to me.
It's a great question.
We can't sustain seventeen and a half percent for the sheriff all the way down. And then you think of the jailers, you think of what they put themselves through, I mean, you know, and expose themselves, I mean. It is, it's a bigger animal than just one person and that's.
The first, the first question, and once we get past the, and it is an, it is an emotional argument. Or an emotional piece of it, because like Steve said, Keisha, like you're saying. You know, this happened because of state action that impacted comp board decision-making. Okay, so it was an external force upon the comp boards.
In 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 fairness to the comp board, their hands were tied.
Well, in terms of how they, what they utilize for comparatives.
Yes.
And you can make the argument of whether or not, as Ed said, you could use city police forces, county police forces, and. They're they're somewhat equalized, this was the, what this essentially was was an equalization order, alright?
Right, and also was to take into consideration that the sheriff should be paid consistently with. Higher-ups of DPS, at what does a captain of DPS.
Sure, but it's an equalization order, I mean, you you just go across all law enforcement, state, city, county and say. All people at a certain level should get paid relatively within a, within a range, the same amount. So for us, you you've gotta get past that piece a little bit. And just, we have to, what's the job worth to us? What's the job worth to the citizens of Marion County? Um, Ed makes a good point about the jail, the PSAP, the jailers. The responsibilities of running Marion County law enforcement versus other counties that may not have that level of staff or responsibility. So I think that's gonna be part of the analysis we go through for that, uh, for that piece, and that's gonna flow through and impact. All the other electeds.
In order, in order to give the comp board, uh, recommendations to the other elected official, which which are probably well-deserved. We have to, we have to cave to the to the other one.
Right, no, and Steve, this is gonna be the part where we're gonna just disagree, because I was shocked that the number for Jason was as low as it was. When I did the math in my head, I thought it'd be thirty-two, thirty-three percent, based on what, if you do what the it said, that's what I thought it was going to be, so I agree with you. The comp board coming in at seventeen, you wanna cut it in half, that affects me.
Exactly.
Right, and so the the question is, what, to Mark's point, what is that position truly worth? Not what did you pay it last year, what is it worth?
Right.
And then, but what is it also worth to, to, I mean, the department itself, because there is ties to that. You've got the chief deputy, you've got the lieutenants.
There, there's, there's a reach down that exists.
It trickles down.
Sure.
I mean, and that's, so for everybody, and that includes all of our electeds who have deputies, it's going, it's more than just what's on the page.
That's right, yep.
Exactly right, and and we've gotta, we've gotta seriously have, that's why it's number two.
Cause you've got insurance at 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 two hundred and eleven, and then you've got, if we were to take the comp board recommendation, that's roughly fifty thousand, that doesn't include. Any of the deputies, any of the.
Well, it doesn't include staff raises.
And then the staff rate, so I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I'm just, the the work we have to do this week probably is going to be the most. I, we, it's been serious in the past, but we've never had something like this. Where we've had something that has impacted the top-end number. And it's probably flowing through to pretty much every other number, cause people see what the comp board recommendations are, and it starts to flow through other parts of the budget. So, it's gonna take some time to think about, what are these jobs worth and what can we afford? This brings some other questions, our expense loads, how do we wanna maintain those? Do we wanna keep our reserve levels as they are? Do we wanna take those reserves down, we talked about fund two? What about property tax relief to the taxpayer?
Right.
And then when you start getting into those questions, well, it, you can't do both, okay? It it'll be very difficult to achieve all the ends on the financing side if we start to say there should be some. Element of relief on the property tax side, and all those questions are legitimate, but they're all part of the mix. Uh, of things will be.
And I don't envy you folks, cause I I'd be the first person to say, hey, tax relief, tax relief, I didn't realize that even if you drop a quarter. Off a two hundred thousand dollars, you're talking about, my tax relief is twenty-seven dollars. That's what, that's what producing the levy by a quarter is, so, you know, do you release it by fifty cents? I mean, at what point do you actually give meaningful tax relief, and that's?
See, fifty cents is about nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, Ed, so if we take it out of fund two.
Right, well, that's your only choice, right?
Yeah, I mean, in all, all. It really is, yeah, but it also helps cover some of the projects we've taken on to a certain degree, because we also lose the mental health level. So if you think about that, that stacking effect, that that additive effect for the taxpayer. At least from the county standpoint, we can actually give some tax relief by using sales tax money to supplement fund two. Which is the intent of sales tax.
Right, exactly.
So there is that balance point there, that there are, there are some things we can do for them too, so.
And at some point, you gotta be hopeful and optimistic that Prairie Ridge and the VA economic development, although we're not gonna see it this year. Hopefully increases our tax base, increases our tax revenue and by the same token.
That's the plan.
Right, but by the same token, be mindful that when you add more people, you add more law enforcement, you add more, more attorneys.
But you don't do it overnight, you do.
No, it's incremental.
Yeah, so, so that's all the stuff we'll be talking, you you can just hear, it's not directed at you, Ed.
No, it's not, it's not.
And I'll, I'll take every arrow that there is, I I don't.
There's a lot, there's a lot of.
There are a lot of balls in the air and ultimately comes down to my first comment is, what is the reserve level? And where, if it isn't on staff, where does the county choose to spend its extra revenue? Even though it is only two hundred and fifty thousand plus a hundred and fifty thousand.
It's only revenue now.
And I think we.
We're only talking about the budget now.
Right.
I know.
I'm not asking you to pay forward, I'm talking about twenty-two, twenty-three, that's it.
And and I will say, I I was very thankful that we could like even the elevator project, that we had the funds to be able to do that. And um, and the move, and me moving in and moving out, and I'm thankful for your people for doing that, um. It's it's those things that you think of for the future. If we were to have, you know, whether it's the roof or whether, I mean, whatever it may be, that we have to have something in reserve, now what is that number? That's, that's the big question, yeah.
Right, and I mean, I think most actuaries could tell you if your budget is X, what should be your reserve. So it's not, we're not asking you to recreate the wheel, and then some of those things, quite honestly. Catastrophe, I mean, you're talking about things that you're gonna end up having to bond for potentially, that you're not gonna be able just to write a check for, and then there's also some. People that Mark and I sit down with who will tell you, even if you can write the check, you shouldn't, so.
Right.
I mean, I get it.
Yep.
I get it, I appreciate you guys' time, I think, at least on behalf of my people, uh, I hope that. You realize that, uh, that my my asks were not willy-nilly, they weren't thrown at a dartboard. I certainly will go back and find the answer to your question to the best of my ability about dismissed cases as a whole. I would be surprised if that number is more than twenty out of a thousand cases. But but I'm, quite honestly, that is me throwing a dart at a dartboard, I, we just. You know, it goes back to when we had domestic cases in the Des Moines Register pointed out, our office doesn't dismiss domestics just cause the victim doesn't wanna participate. So, uh, you know, I think our can, our prosecution rate was over ninety percent where some of my colleagues were in the low thirties.
Right.
Anything else?
I appreciate it, Ed.
No, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Take care, guys.
Yep. Very good, we've got a half hour, actually more than that, it's set as scheduled. Talk some more about. Can I get Renee?
I think we can make a copy of that.
I was gonna say, let's make a copy of this for. I was gonna say, let's make a copy of this for Steve and I, I appreciate that, thank you Keisha for having me. Uh good discussion on that, so keep that, don't, don't lose sight of that. Um as we, as we go through this, and Jake, if you don't mind, we've got a little bit of time here, let's, let's. Let's throw up that fund two uh cash flow analysis, we can turn to it in our.
Yeah, you'll have to go to an easier, yeah.
Yeah, alright, cause you're not here, oh, I, no, I didn't mean, that's okay.
I guess if I get seventy dollars back, then that's good, that's good.
That's just.
Well, makes sense to me.
Let's throw up that fund two, or turn to fund two, we're gonna talk cash flow uh in your books here for a second. So if you look at the cash flow analysis that we were talking about last week. Uh just rough math, and I'm talking about proposed FY twenty-two, twenty-three.
We're in the, sorry, cash flow. I'm listing, I just.
Good. We have fund two.
Fund two, so this is the only fund we probably have any conceptual room to change, alright? We're, we've got a proposed ending fund balance of three point two five five million, alright? Um we have expenses in the fund at five point one million with a revenue flow of four point eight. So we've got a difference of two point six eight, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Jake is gonna take, I asked Jake to take a look and say what's driving that loss. Because as you do the analysis, if we took this down, let's say, like I said, Ed, we took it down fifty cents.
Right. Hey Jake.
Sorry, Marka.
Is that?
Sorry, Mark, I'm losing you, Mark.
No, I'm not talking.
Okay.
I was getting feedback or something.
Okay.
Alright, so if we take that down fifty cents, which would be quite a significant reduction, that's nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty. Out of that ending fund balance, drops that levy rate to one point nine zero one zero seven. From where it is currently, but what I need to know is what is driving that red number? Okay, if we know what's driving that red number, because right now if you did it at that rate, you take that. Let's say it was constant, every year we're in that red zone, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That means your fund balance will last you about eight point six years before you zero it out.
Yep.
Okay, but if this, if this negative number is from, let's say it's uh. People over budgeting their health insurance, or something like that, then we know that that's not.
Well, we'll see.
Factor into uh, it could, it could be a, actually.
Then it's not a valid number.
Well, it's budget, it's a budget number instead of an actual loss, it's not something that's going to recur year over year.
You know, cause I went through and looked at last year's, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one ending balance for the general, um. This general surplus, or so general supplement, and you know, rough figure is about. Um is five hundred and seventy-seven thousand that was budgeted extra. So for an example, so like when I asked Tyler a while back, you know, Rhodes Department had like ninety-four thousand extra in it, well. As large as what his department is, and I understand the variances and whether you had had single rates or. Um whether, you know, whether it was a single rate or a family rate. So when you look at the ending balances of that, I think they continue to increase it. I guess my perception is, is I think they look for us this number, and they, we say, it's gonna be roughly anywhere from ten to thirteen. So then I think they go back and they increase it, and they're just trying to do their due diligence so that they don't run low on that fund. Could we tighten that fund up? Yeah, I, I, I do think we can.
Yeah, so that, if, if that holds true, then that's just a budgeted number, and that budgeted number is actually gonna be in the black once you get to actuals.
Right, yep, yep.
So. Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Now, it doesn't have to be fifty cents, I mean, we could go something lower than that, but I'm just saying at a maximum, there is room in that fund. To provide some tax relief. But this is the other point, Ed, Ed brought this up, when we also talk about our fund balances, that we, we can't use this fund for salaries. So there's no transferring these dollars over to general.
It's just trying to giving tax relief, yeah, yeah.
So, so the only thing we can do for salaries is out of fund one, and.
Is there, is there, is there a couple, I mean, is there's. Jake, do you have a, you can, you can take one out of supplemental, right, for um.
Take, take one of what?
Um, do you have something, yeah, you have, you have a salary out of general supplemental, and then Tyler has some, or is Tyler's all?
So I, I, because of the election side, so half of my budget or more is fund two.
Okay.
Because it's tightly, it's attached directly to uh elections. Yeah, I don't have a very small staff, so there may be some, a little bit of crossover that, like Jody's all funded out of that, um. Uh that fund, so.
It's a very small, but, cause I think this is two.
Just salaries come out of the fund two.
Yeah, nothing.
Tyler has his, his benefits come out of fund two, but not salaries, that's fund twenty.
Okay, fund twenty, yep, that's right, okay.
So that really does.
Yeah. So.
Very, yeah, I was gonna say, there's just a few.
So, so out of this, it's, it's really, do we wanna provide tax relief? Do we wanna lower this reserve? And it really doesn't play into the salary equation.
Doesn't play into anything.
So, not, not, not in this, the salary equation's gonna come in fund one, from a, when you look at it across the board.
I'm currently over budgeting by about forty-three thousand dollars. From what my actual is, as far as the number of. Employees on a family plan versus single. Over budgeting three employees, that's something I'll mention to you again in my budget session will be the. Military deployment, I'm currently budgeting, budgeting an additional employee. Because of some possible overlap, which we may or may not actually see. Because of that military deployment and the backfilling and possible attrition and everything that I sent a letter to you about. About a year ago.
Right, yeah.
I think this, I think what we're, we're looking at now, Tyler, is kind of a moot point on what direction we're, what we're trying to accomplish with the fund two.
I mean, I think we can be mindful of the fund two and allowing it not to become, so there's, I mean. I think each, and each department head could look at that and, and look at the figures, but overall. Um if we wanna decrease it as a whole, I, I mean, to do significant tax relief, yes, strictly tax relief.
That's all we're talking about.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause obviously, it's not used.
And I'll, and given what Tyler said, you know, that's, that's a, takes it down to, let's just call it two twenty. In the red, if he's over budgeting by forty-three thousand, so if you think of the other departments doing that same math. It's just, that's gonna be the bulk of it.
Yep, yep.
So, so I think we've got some room here to do something with this fund, um and bringing it down. Uh the salary side, different question, um. And, you know, let's just look at these comp board recommendations, right now, we don't have to make any decisions at this point. Who do we have? We have Veterans Affairs at three.
Yeah.
I'll probably wanna take, uh, let's two forty-five, we'll take a little bit of a break, and then come back.
Do you guys, do you guys wanna go through any, are you waiting on Mike, is that what's next?
Yeah.
You want, have any interest in looking at a, a couple of the outside departments while you wait for him, or do you wanna take a break?
I kinda wanna sit, since it's on our mind, I kinda wanna talk our comp board.
Okay.
At least keep that, keep that fresh, and then we can.
I gotta get that printer stopped, just a second.
Okay. So, we've had this scenario worksheet uh for a number of years, I think it's helpful. Uh it shows some of the potential scenarios if we change. Uh by some different incremental percentage decline, remember, we can reduce by like percentage. Uh across the board, the only line item we've got complete control of is the supervisor line. So if Steve doesn't wanna raise this year, you can certainly choose not to take his. Um and then other, or we can accept it as presented. Uh those are your options as we go through this. Um the discussion we just had with Ed is going to be very applicable for any of the electeds. As we think about what the final recommendations are, um I'm gonna go to that, let's go to that. Page, there's the hundred percent. Hundred percent, so the final comp board recommendations were. The supervisors, a six point one eight percent increase, sheriff seventeen point four seven. Auditor eight point one eight, treasurer seven point two four. Recorder seven point seven two, and attorney eight point five eight. In the aggregate, a total nine point eight zero percentage increase for the electeds over last year. Uh total dollars, we're looking about an increase of uh forty-nine thousand seventy-seven and nine cents. Uh and just in gross dollars, so.
Have we looked at what that would be um for, you know, like Jason's department? And then all the other with their deputies, what we'd be looking at total dollar?
Yeah, Lisa's working on that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, cause it'll flow through to, I think, for law enforcement. It'll be Jason, Jason and three or four, I don't remember.
It's four, is there four lieutenants? Three, I don't know.
Yeah, she's working, she's working on this spreadsheet for that.
Lieutenants are, so.
Obviously, each of the other electeds probably have a deputy and they do that eighty-five percent rule.
Yeah, I have, I have one deputy that I have an eighty-five percent.
Yeah, and that's probably true for Michaela and for Karen.
That's up to eighty-five, that doesn't.
It's up to.
But I think they're all at eighty-five.
Oh yeah, I think they're all at eighty-five.
How it's worded.
Sure, sure, so there's definitely a, there's definitely, it's more than just that, uh that will impact on the salary.
Well, I mean, and then we think about, so I don't know, um without recalling, but let's just use Ed's. Example, when we just, you know, did his, you know, he went through a majority of his, he gave them the same amount, if not a little more, I mean, one of them. Um to all of his employees, if that's what he's requesting, so I don't know what all department heads um did. On electeds, but, yeah.
So.
I, I don't, I don't think there was a direct carryover, Keisha, I mean, I don't look at them close, but. In this case, especially this year, these numbers, I don't think are, um. Most departments, I don't think floated this high all the way through, that, that's not what I was hearing.
Okay, alright.
There's three lieutenants.
Through the tenets.
Deputy and then three lieutenants.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, you know, it's gonna come down to, for, from our perspective, I, I, it's, it's what is the job worth? Um you just strip out the, the law, strip out all that feeling that you might have about that. What it, everybody should get paid reasonably close to what you think the job is worth. Our job is to determine those relative values. Um and you use comparatives, you use other counties, you can use other police forces, as the law does. I, what I don't wanna get to is this, and this is the way I think boards in the past maybe did these things. I don't just want it to be an arbitrary number, that because seventeen percent looks really, really rich. I'm gonna lower it, alright, the rationale to lowering has to make sense relative to what the job is worth. Because if you lower, take, take Jason, now because of that number, take it down by half. You're gonna take, you know, four percent, three and a change, three and change, three and change, and a little less than three.
Yep.
For the other electeds, so.
How convenient.
Well, it is what it is.
I know it is what it is.
So now we got, can't, can't change it, so what do you do with it going forward? Um and relative to the, there, did the legislature make a mistake? In using this as their analogy, cause remember, this comes from the legislature.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, you know my.
Yeah, and I.
They're, they're economically. Be careful, don't say, smiley face, smiley face.
Yeah.
But did the legislature and the governor make a mistake?
Yes, in my opinion.
Okay, what mistake did they make?
I think they should have left it up to the county to decide on what that position is worth. Not make, to me, they just kinda made it arbitrary.
So what, so what would be the rationale to say that county sheriffs? Comp board should use similar sized police of, police forces, city police forces. Now in that analysis, that they've never used before, it's always been compare sheriff to sheriff.
I know, but, but what, in analysis they've made, they.
Just like.
Not talking that way. In the analysis they made, they, they, they talk about comparable police size forces in the county. Then they go clear on up the ladder into the higher patrol administration, so which one we use it?
Well, they, they, they can use all of those.
And I think it's also, they picked, I mean, some of this, you can go and pick out the highest, so you've got a city, we'll, we'll take Marion County. You know, Pella Police Department pays their chief of police a hundred and twenty thousand, Knoxville pays theirs eighty-eight four. Well, what looks more appealing? Well, the hundred and twenty thousand, I wanna get paid that.
Sure.
So, you know, we, we kind of, it give them an opportunity, I just think that it would have been, um. I, I think when you approach these things legislatively, I guess, I feel like it was just kind of a. Oh, here, here, by the way, here it is, this is what you're gonna do, it wasn't even really discussed. I think the back the blue bill is, is important, I guess I am not for the, the last few paragraphs. I don't know, I think it's one of the last.
They gotta add it on at the end.
Yeah, they add, it added on, I think it was an opportunity, oh, wait, this is an opportunity, we can make more money. And I, and I truly mean that when I say that, when I, you know.
I, 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 I do.
You have to think of your road deputies too.
I do believe we have to pay, and I, and boy, I get, I get real aggravated when I pay in a position. I mean, yeah, is that position probably worth that money? Do I have the right person in that position? Maybe not.
Right.
But they're still getting that money, you know what I'm saying?
And it's not like it's a, it's a salary that's gonna drop, drop off and you get, you know, a new elected official.
You can't, you, you have no numbers to play with, once you set that, that, you're stuck with that number.
Yeah.
Well, in, in my, in my work experience, if I wanted more money or a better job, I either. I either got more education pursuant to that job, so I could get a pay bump, or I went someplace else.
Well, let's take ourselves.
Well, I wanna, I wanna stop right there, Steve, cause you just kinda hit the nail on the head for me. I've never been at a job where the legislature can automatically jack my salary.
Me either.
Because I got a lot, I, it was always, if I don't like what I'm doing. I, I either, I either went and asked my boss, I said, hey, I think I, I think I'm worth more money, or I left. So, so that's the, you just hit, when, when it's legislatively mandated, you know, we deal with a lot of mandates as a county from the legislature. And we know how well they've done with that.
This is what we can say is an unfounded, unfunded mandate?
That's exactly where I'm headed, it's just another one of those, although it's funded, but it has a similar feel, right? Where here's the legislature saying in a hurried way, at the end of a legislative process, let's tack this on. And it's political, I get it, it looks good from an election standpoint for the governor and some of these other folks. If we do anything opposite of that, are we supporting law enforcement, not supporting law, of course we've supported law enforcement for all these years, look what we've done. Uh for the sheriff's department, so, but it does, it does run into all of those arguments politically. But yet at the same time, there is a, the job for Marion County, I don't care about the other counties. I don't even care about the other police forces, I care about what's it worth for Marion County. And then how do we break that analysis down to get to what we think that number should be?
Well, people run for these offices and know what the salary was. Well, people run for these offices and know what the salary was from the get go. I, I go to a place of employment, I don't, I don't say yes to the job until they tell me what I'm getting paid. So apparently I must agree that the wages are fair to me at that point in time.
Right. Right.
Do I, do I, I'll tell you what, before this compensation board thing all came up. I had in my mind, I was looking at anywhere between six and probably eight percent. That's the number I had stuck in my head that was, that probably people were going to have to. We're gonna have to lay that just to stay even with what was going on. So, but now, I mean, I probably could have gave it to the people that actually deserve it. Now I'm forced into this position.
Right. Right. And I'm with you, Steve, I, I, I was, I was, before this, I was in that zone, I was in that same range. But this has changed that. That hasn't changed my thought process on where I think I should be.
No, no, I haven't.
And Ed, and Ed's numbers were, were not outrageous.
It changes what we can do on the compensation board side of it.
It does, and that flows through, right?
Right.
It, but like Ed's numbers, knowing the legal environment here, knowing how hard it is from a competitive standpoint. Eight percent doesn't sound unreasonable to me. And especially when his overall budget increase is only three. So he's doing more with less, he's maintained a lid on hiring new people, he's done everything we've asked, you know, him to do. So I don't have really a lot of issues where.
I know how big issue that either, this is the only thing I have a real big issue with.
This, this is, this is the compensation issue to wrestle with as we go through this. And I think it's good, we get a chance to kinda air it out a little bit. The public can see that we're frustrated with having something we feel like it's dictated.
Exactly.
To a little bit. And it almost edits them out of the equation. I mean, we represent them, we're elected by the people to represent them in establishing these budgets. And we get something handed, or our comp board gets something handed by the legislature to say. We think that everybody should get a thirty four percent pay increase, which some counties are doing. And we think we're being reasonable by knocking it down by half.
All I can say is the budget in this orbit.
Well, what about, and I, I, you know, I wanna come to the question of the future. Cuz this goes to what you were talking about, Keisha, sustainability. When you raise these salaries up that much. You're talking about people that are gonna be in the top one percent of all Marion County wage earners. Will have probably, what, two or three in six figures. For, for, for government job, tax supported jobs. I'm not saying we shouldn't pay it, I'm not saying it's not worth it to our residents, we have to think about that a little bit. So.
And, and I guess the question I had, I, and I'll ask Jason this, and I'll ask, I mean, I would ask, if, who, whatever elected, whether it was us. What makes one be so much higher than this? Why is one worth so much more, worth more than all the others?
Yeah. That's, that's a fair question. But right now, I'm kind of where you're at, Steve, I'm in that eight range. But that's gonna have an impact.
I said I was in the six to eight range.
Well, yeah, I'm in.
But, yeah.
Yeah, you get it, I'm in that, I'm in that range.
I get it.
And I think if we could have had six to eight range, like what we spoke about, and this, this would, this wouldn't have been a huge issue. But is this, is this going to be the norm now for, for us to come? That's something we have to wrestle with.
Well, is the next association gonna go up and ask for a?
An increase, or is it gonna be, well, I, I, I'm asking seventeen this year, I'm asking seventeen next year. I mean, again, it's.
Anybody know, uh, private sector wise, any of our companies give out seventeen percent pay increases? To our, to, to the workers at Premier and Pelacorp?
Not that I'm aware of.
I would, I would think we'd be hearing about that off the.
Yeah, I have not heard of any.
Yeah.
I struggle with this because I know people that are out there working for forty, forty one, forty two thousand dollars a year. And come hard and afford to pay rent.
Yeah.
And now I'm, now I'm asking, somebody's asking for that, 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 that rate of increase is just almost obscene to me because.
Our biggest issue for me, well, not our biggest, but one of the issues, Steve, is we're not growing our population. So it's taking more of that same pool of dollars. Yeah, it grew by three hundred thousand, but.
You're splitting all that, yeah.
That's again, that's a hardship on our taxpayer. Because of federal government policy. They have to pay more in property tax dollars because of artificially low interest rates and cheap money, and that's all gonna change. Uh, when the Fed starts raising interest rates. So, we're just ask, we're just asking them to chip in more money, pay for this increased level of salary base. For essentially the same service.
Same service.
I, I don't know how you justify that. What, what are we doing more of? What are we offering more to the taxpayer that's making them safer, better, what's improving their lives? I, I, that's what I struggle with, because there's a service, a product we produce, well, it doesn't really change.
I struggle with that too, and it also comes back, what, what Keisha said. I, I know sustainability is a target out there. But sooner or later. If, if this, if the increases keep going and going and going on. Somebody, somebody, maybe not us, but some future board's gonna have to decide on what services are gonna be kept to pay for all this.
Well, I think, you know, we, we haven't talked about it yet, but if you look just ahead, just back of the envelope math. We haven't raised our general levy in, over, Jake, how long has it been since the, has it been twenty years since the general levy's been raised, general fund levy?
Been three fifty for as long as I've been here, that's, that's got like a two and a zero behind it, so.
Yep. So when you think about that. There, there's gonna come that day, if you keep doing this. Especially if property taxes don't go up.
Exactly, right.
Then you're gonna be faced with that question.
Well, what we tried to, that's what we had the discussion with Ed with.
And then it comes back to, Mark, it's our fault. We as the board of supervisors had to raise the levy and it all falls on us.
Yeah.
And no, nobody else takes that blunt, it's us. And so that, that is where we have to think of the future, and that's what I struggle with.
And, and the dollars that we have, Keisha, are, and you know my bent, my bent is. The more we can help our cities, unincorporated areas to grow economically, the better we are, that's a better use of their money.
I, I don't, that's a hard, I can't argue with that cuz that makes sense.
You know, so the things that, the, the VA project, Prairie Ridge project, the things we've, we've participated with other municipalities with, those are good. Those projects that have to get done, so these, so our county can be sustainable itself. So we can grow our population, at least make it a, give us a shot at growing our population.
At least make it an employable population.
Yeah, yeah. So that's. So all, all questions we're gonna have to wrestle with, but it's good to have the discussion, I think, as we, this is gonna be, this is probably the number one issue we face. This and the health insurance reform. So from a budgetary standpoint, we've gotta think through.
Well, it's been, it's been a lot easier if the legislator would have stuck their noses out of it and we would have got. Probably would have wound up giving between seven and eight percent to everybody.
Yeah.
Now.
It would have helped Jake, that's for sure.
It would have helped everybody, it would have helped every elected official.
Jake's saying, Jake's saying, don't involve me in this. Very good. Alright, well, we'll talk more about this, again, we're not getting to final approval yet, but I think it's good to air it out a little bit. And then we will have it over the course of the week, where we've gotta make some decisions. About what we wanna do, in a general sense of it, right now, but there'll be more discussion as people come in. Probably look, look at, what do we have on Friday, Renee?
Friday, EMA in the morning and then sheriff and development in the afternoon.
Friday, Friday afternoon has some schedules, it looks like.
Nine one one, EMA, sheriff and development on Friday.
Yeah, so we might be taking that last hour on Friday. To, to look at this and come to some conclusions. We'll give everybody a fair shot to talk and, and ask questions, but we certainly have teed it up. Okay? Alright, let's take a ten minute recess before Mike comes in and we close it out for the day.
Wow, I've seen Jake on this.
So, uh, motion to go into recess.
Motion to go into recess.
Second.
So, Rainey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCollum?
Hi.
Alright, thank you, we'll take it, ten minutes.
I'm not speaking, try to make, do something nice for somebody and it gets to be.
We're going, we're going back in.
I don't care.
Alright, uh, reconvening on January thirty first.
I'm gonna go live again.
On? Yes, no? Yes, alright. Motion to reconvene, is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
McCollum?
Hi.
Rainey?
I guess.
John?
Hi. Day one.
Okay, you shut the door and then you threw me for loop. Oh, so you want him over here? Over to one step.
Alright, come on in.
They wanna sit at the table, remember the microphone? So everybody can hear you, so there's a microphone over there, you can share, if you want, or you can come sit up here. Yeah, grab another chair, is that okay?
Yeah, yep, yep.
We get along.
We do.
He didn't show up here.
Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Mike, how you doing?
Oh, you guys are gonna share, right?
We are.
I'm doing fine, excuse me. The office.
What's happening, Lord?
I don't know, I'm in a budget meeting, I'll check it out when I get back to the office, I don't know what, I'll check it out. No, I can't take it right now, I'll do it later. Alright, bye. Turn this thing off. Oh, yes. What are you even done with me for?
Alright, well, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Alright, but I think we're doing well, are we doing well? We're doing well, alright, everybody says we're doing well, so we must be doing well.
Okay, we'll take it, let's just go with that.
Alright, very good.
Right.
Mike? How are things going in veterans affairs?
Make sure I talk into the mic.
Oh yeah, talk into the mic, otherwise Jake will make all kinds of hand gestures up there and.
Well, I'd say things are going just fine. I don't have any problems, I have nothing major going on, nothing negative to report.
So, you gotta refresh my memory here, it was either the last budget meeting, or maybe it was two budget meetings ago because of COVID. Now we kinda lost it here, right? We were going to talk about, or we were gonna go out and do more engagement. How, how's that going, have we been able to recover from COVID, or is that just been just totally taken care of because of COVID?
Well, I think we've recovered pretty much from COVID as far as that goes.
Okay.
There aren't a lot of events to be present at other than service. Organization events which are always well covered and they have my information, and so I hear back from them just fine.
Okay.
If something does come up though, I'm ready to. At the ring and go see what's going on, but basically, uh, even during COVID, and when I stayed in the courthouse during remodeling and all that. Letting people in the north door, I mean, I had activity. So it wasn't all a lost cause due to COVID here, but getting into twenty one, it picked up some, it's picking up a little more now. As far as the indigent side of veterans, I don't have a, a lot of veterans needing a lot of assistance. I get maybe one or two, maybe one a pay period for rent or a utility. Or years ago, I had, you know, seven or eight.
Right.
So.
But I think with all the federal programs and housing and other things that kick in and, uh. Other, uh, seems like I get emails almost daily on another organization that wants on our website, or they want something going on. Because they have various ways they can help veterans, whether it's misophagema, or whether it's for hearing, or. There's just a ton of those organizations out there clamoring to do business. So basically, uh, I ignore most of those. And, um. Through two reasons, one is that if I did wanna put another thing on the website, I kinda run that by Andrew and we see if we think we ought to put that on or not. Normally, we don't.
Okay.
Again, the veterans have a lot of good resources out there, and I think they're pretty well lined up through the VA medical system. And, uh, others to know where those benefits are. Because they're not knocking the door down to get them, although I had two in this afternoon that I'm working with on two prospects, but.
How much, how much, I mean, are you seeing an influx at all? I mean, with the mental health situation in which, you know, where we're at, I mean, are you seeing as these, the veterans are getting, you know, aging? Um, are you seeing that renewal of younger veterans coming for services at all?
The younger veterans are pretty much vetted right in the National Guard or in the units they come out of. Uh, that information's pretty well given to them now in channel, and they pretty much have signed up in that arena. So I don't see them, unless that they finally get on a disability, or they get on something that isn't quite right, or they're not happy with it. Then they might bring it into me and we'll talk about it and see if I, there's anything I can do to help them further appeal that or change that. So I do do some appeals. I have, for example, this month coming into February, I have a widow of veteran that I had to take up to Des Moines. Uh, for a tele hearing with a, with a federal, with a law judge. To see if she'll be able to get the disability from her ex-husband or from her past husband. We've been fighting that for two years and we finally got a, an award where we can take her up there, she can say her piece and we'll see if we get anywhere. But those, you try to stay away from the appeals because you're two to three to five years out.
Right.
On those dockets before you can, uh, ever get a veteran.
Right.
Up there to do anything. But I'm not seeing a lot of people with, a lot of veterans with major problems, I'm just not. Uh, over nineteen years I've been here, I think we've canvassed the area well, I, uh, used to do vets all the time. I, I don't know what to say, I mean, if they come in to help them, if not, they're not here.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's changed is wars changed. So when I was in Afghanistan, ten and eleven, uh, it was combat situation. And so, um, we had five four, three, six, five, four here in town, I mean, they just got back from a deployment, but their deployment looked a lot different. And let's say their deployment in ten and eleven. And so, um, I think, um, just so you all know, when we, when we as National Guard units and active duty do the same thing. When we come back and we demo, they'll demo, mobilization and a demo. Uh, when we demo, there's a, there's a, a program, it's called Yellow Ribbon Program. And at that program, when we, when the unit comes back, they, they have a litany of services, um, that they offer the soldier and their families. And, and Mike, and that program has changed over the years. Mike used to go, um, in fact, I think he were in Waterloo when I came back, uh, to do my, uh.
Yeah, I did probably six yellow ribbon events in Des Moines and stuff back, back when major, the big units were coming back, yeah.
And so a lot of times what happens is the, the soldiers, service members get a lot of that information, it's at weekend typically. Um, like the end of February, we'll be, they'll be doing a yellow ribbon for one of the units, RSG that just got back. And so, um, that weekend is spent, um, kind of offering, you know, all of these, um. All of the organizations and businesses that have business for the veterans. Or have assistance for the veterans, whether that be mental health, or, uh, physical, emotional, familial, um, whatever that is. And so I think one of the reasons that maybe. We don't see a lot of foot traffic is it, is because that's. It's off, it's all offered there and they get that, those cards and those, that, it's the propaganda, right? Not, and that doesn't mean it's a bad thing, propaganda's propaganda. And, um, and so, um, that's one of the things, I think as far as traffic goes in the, for Marion County or any, any other county. Is the, the traffic isn't our bread and butter, it's those yellow ribbon, um, events. And so I'm curious, I, with three, six, five, four just returning here in the last, you know, sixty to ninety. events. And so, I'm curious, um, I, with, uh, three-six-five-four just returning here in the last, you know, sixty to ninety days, they're, um, I'm curious to see if Mike's foot traffic will, or interest will increase with them, with them just coming home. And, and right now, I don't, I don't anticipate seeing it now, like right now, because their equipment is just starting to return, so they returned about a month ago or so. Um, their equipment is starting to filter in. Uh, that's what I do on the full-time side, so I start, I manage some of that stuff coming back. And so, their equipment's starting to filter in, uh, now here back home to Iowa, and so, they're pretty busy. Um, as you can manage getting that in, and, and, um, there's a whole reset process and so on. They took a lot of their equipment with them. But I think here in another, hmm, six months, you know, as the equipment gets in, we get all of that equipment reset and that kind of thing, and things start to settle a little bit. Uh, those service members have a period of time where they don't drill, like we normally see us drilling on the weekends and stuff, for a period of time, though they're kinda on a hiatus, if you will. Um, so, once that starts back, the equipment gets back into the motor pool and things start getting back to normal here this summer, um, I'll be anxious to see if the, if the foot traffic and, and just the requests increase. I don't know that it will. Uh, but with the local unit just returning, I'm kind of anxious to see if it will. Uh, and I'm in a good spot where I can push some of that, right? I'm at Camp Dodge and I stop talking to lots, so I can, I can kind of, kind of force their hand a little bit on that. Just because we have, I have people all the time that don't know, like they don't know. Well, we talk, not from Marion County, but, you know, I've called, I've called Mike on several occasions, like, hey, who is the, who's the Redbin whatever county?
Right.
Um, because I'll be talking to somebody about, um, whatever, and I'm like, well, I just talked to your county service officer, and they're like, I don't even know what that is. What do you mean, you don't know what that is? You know, and so, I'll call Mike and be like, hey, who's the, who's the person up in this county, so I can give them that, that name, and they go, go, go talk to this person, right? And that's what they're there for.
That brings up a point of one of the things that I spend a significant amount of time on, and that is, uh, I'm on the executive board for the association, and so, education is a big, is, is, has been a big push over the years for county veteran service officers. Way back when, that resulted in the ten thousand dollar grant we get, it's resulted now and pushed to add another three thousand on for national school, it's canvassing and lobbying, put the capital, it, uh, has a variety of issues that go along with what we're trying to get for veterans in Iowa. And so, that's always ongoing, and, uh, that takes some of my interest and some of my time as I'm involved, uh, going to those meetings or, uh, being involved somewhat, although I have stepped back some because this, starting March, will be my last year. March to March of twenty-three, and about April or May or somewhere in there, I will be retiring. So, this is my last budget, full budget I'm looking at here, uh, just to mention that. But I'm on target for that, and I think I've come to a resolve about that and, um, pretty much made that decision. So, I'll have twenty years in completed, and then I'm going to get back across the river and, uh, not do this anymore.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I know.
But I'm not giving up this year.
So, you do know you're never totally retired, Mike?
Yeah, I've heard that. I've also heard people coming in, I thought you were retired. We'll be doing that and, uh, commissioners wise, we're fine, we're set up, uh, with Kirk Roy and joining the group, but he's, he's a real go-getter. Kirk does a lot of stuff out there for veterans on the side too, and he, he's just really great. So, uh, we've enjoyed adding him, and it's just been a, a really good flowing process for us right now as a, as a department. Yeah.
I got a couple of questions for you, Mike. So, online, I think we talked about this before, are you still doing handwritten, or are you doing some of the stuff online?
No, I will completely continue doing handwritten work because I worked with Jack, and we teamed up eighteen years ago, and we have no reason to do online. My replacement, though.
I guess I'm gonna request that your replacement be able to do something online, and that, and that's just because of what I know. And, you know, my private job is working with the VA. I have to do everything online now, um, so.
I do a lot, I do some things online, yes, Keesha, just to let you know, I mean, I, I'm not posted online. But I do not put any of my veterans' names, social security numbers, or anything out of that office of mine anywhere. And that's just me. That's, it goes back from my military training days of security. And, uh, they're having some success with the VA regional office and the programs that they have online. Uh, it keeps developing
Yep.
and developing and developing and changing.
It's very safe, and I will tell you, I mean, even the codes, the system and getting, I mean, I'm sure what you deal with, it's very, it's very secure. Where do you guys see the future of your position? Cause you know, they're cutting everywhere else, and I just wonder where.
I think the position of, of having a county veteran service officer is gonna be here for quite a while. I don't see any changes to that coming down. But I do see it becoming more electronic.
Does it become, do you think that, like, they're doing regional, you know, um, now at the VA, do you see that becoming more of a regional situation? I don't know. I mean, I'm just.
Well, it's regional now. I mean, we've always had the VA regional office, and we've always done things through that.
But I'm talking about your.
Do you mean as opposed to a county, a county officer in each county?
Yeah.
They won't change that.
Does the code say that? I don't know.
There's a few small counties that would like to merge, like the mental health thing went here a few years ago, sort of, and that regional idea. But the regional idea right now has been put down pretty much, wanting to keep a veteran service officer in each county, and that's supported by the state.
Okay, and so, for the future, thinking of the future for us as a board, um, since our population is thirty thousand, it's still, what, thirty hours? We, we have to have somebody thirty hours a week and, yeah, and, uh.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And I don't know, um, ma'am, I can check the code. I didn't bring it with me on the, you know, right now, I, I don't know if it says it in the code that we have to have it in all counties, which I think was your question. I don't know the answer to that. Sorry, can you hear me? I don't know the answer to that, so I can, I can check that for you and get back.
I just wondered where they're looking at, yeah.
I just wanna give you an answer, and I don't have it, uh, right now.
Did you have another question, Keesha?
I don't think so. I think you, you answered it.
I do, uh, wanna say that I agree with the electronic, um, I mean, at some point in time, we need to get that way. We need to get that way. And I think that's a, I, I think the hiring of a new veteran service officer is a great place to start that.
And Mike, you hadn't made mention before that it ne- doesn't necessarily have to be a veteran. Veterans obviously are, would come to the top, but if you, if there wasn't, it's a training process, right?
That's correct. Uh, we changed that in the Iowa code about five, six years ago. We brought on, uh, just not only directors, but we brought on administrators. And that allowed people that were already doing that job out in the counties that were not veterans to be brought in and be approved. And we've continued that process, so anybody can be hired that's not a veteran. Except in the commissioner area. The commissioners aren't your veterans. And we will line up, I will work with whoever's gonna come in to get them lined up to do the different kinds of programs they have due to sign up at the federal building to get their card and be able to get their PIF card and be able to get in and start into the program. To get the computer programs into the office so that they can go online and, uh, look up, uh, and help veterans that way.
So, how long were you trained then, or did the commissioner have to help with that? I mean, was that?
I trained on my own. I didn't have anybody to train me. You reach out, you reach out in partnership with all the other people in the federal building, other places that I did when I got here. That's the best way to do it.
Right.
You go face to face, and I, I did a lot of traveling, I did a lot of visiting, uh, went to many events, had people help me if I had a question on, on particular thing, on an application, I knew who I could call and ask. Eventually, you learn that. It just becomes kind of second nature. So, uh, it's been.
You're seeing the turnover? And what, and the people that you're dealing with?
Yeah, we had forty-some people turnover in the last year at, uh, county veteran service officers.
On a, on a good note, though, we went, was it October?
Yeah, October, you, yeah, at the school, yeah.
October, we had our, our fall school, and there, I, there was a lot more commissioners, and so, the commissioners have a school on a day that the directors aren't allowed to even go to.
Yeah, we can't spy on them.
They don't attend, and I was very pleasantly surprised at the, at the amount of commissioners that were there this year.
So, there's a push maybe for the commissioners to become more involved?
I think so, and, um, learn more, um, get more involved and engaged. And, uh, another thing that I was pleasantly surprised is the age of the, um, commissioners were, um, more my age, right? And I'm not necessarily young, but, um, or even younger than me, and so, I, that I was, I was appreciative of because, um, you know, you have the old guys, right? Um, and things have changed, right, since Vietnam? And so, to see the, um, to see that in, within the, um, commissioner population, I was, I was ki- I was pretty excited about that.
Oh, that is, that is, yeah.
Yeah, I was.
Happy to see, hear that too.
Yeah, I was, um, I was very pleasantly surprised at the, at the fall school to see the room as full as it was, and then with, um, the age population that was in the room as well, so that's, uh, that was good.
So, Mike, you asked, uh, for six percent. How did you get your six? Just out of curiosity. How'd you come about it?
Did my six percent?
How did you, yeah, come to that?
I basically got six percent on everything I get this year.
Okay.
That's how I reached it. I didn't, I didn't pull any magic figure out of the sky or anything like that. I just thought it was a fair thing to put down, and that's what I put down and brought it to the board last first of January, and I thought that was more than fair, and so, we put it down.
See, that's the, that's the only light item, that's the only light item that's changed in the.
It's the only thing we changed, period.
And I, and I think that historically, just historically, that's what we've done, is six percent. It's just kind of what we wanted. It's the only thing we were changing.
We've gotten two to three to four, whatever the, whatever you've done.
I, I commend you for keeping it in the realm of reality, Mike.
Yeah, reality.
Perceived reality.
At least we're not talking politics, Steve, so we're okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But anyway, that's, I did, uh, Keesha, I did.
And you work a forty hour week.
Yeah, and it's, um, yeah.
I bet.
I do.
Very good.
Yeah.
Well, Mike? So, this is your last budget.
He'll be here for the next.
Well, I'll be here to put in the next one, but I won't be using any of it.
Also, you're gonna make sure whoever replaces you.
Yeah.
All right.
And I'd be glad to be on board to help with the replacement. We've gotta get, whoever comes in, and I don't care who it is, I have no one in mind.
So, step me through that process. I mean, does that, is that your board then? Who do they get involved in the recruiting process for?
They do, they get involved in the recruiting process, and they recommend you who they wanna hire.
Okay, okay.
And I do think that we as a board need to think about the future along with the commissioner, whether we're wanting somebody in a thirty hour range, or if we're wanting somebody forty hours.
Yeah. I, I think utilization is, is pretty critical, um, if you're not seeing the numbers you've seen in the past. What does that mean for Marion County?
Well, the availability is a big thing.
Right.
I can be sitting down in the hallway and talking to other people coming in and showing them where the elevator is and everything else, and having a joyful time welcoming people to the courthouse. But basically, uh, you'd be surprised of, uh, some of the people that come through there, then all of a sudden they're a veteran and they wanna talk, and they'll go in my office. So, I catch them in the hallway, or some obviously know where the office is, or they've gone upstairs. I have a good networking with the other departments in the courthouse, and if one is upstairs and they need something that's veteran issued, they automatically just send them down to me, and I mean, it's just like tongue in cheek, so.
Right.
And will they should.
Yeah, and, but you'd be surprised in a lot of counties that don't work that way, Steve.
Sure.
How's your office, switching sides? Did that? People, you know, does slow the traffic at all?
They think it's smaller.
That's you.
And I could degrade it.
Yeah, right.
But, no, no, all kidding aside, it's narrower. It's a foot narrower.
Yeah, but you wouldn't have to have all those filing cabinets if we did something online.
I'll be glad, I'll be glad to throw every file out in there if you like.
But then you gotta go electronic, right?
That's right, so you'll, you'll have plenty, that next.
I think that's her exact point. I think she's saying.
I just like to give him a hard time.
Well, I appreciate that because you would, you, you'd understand then, uh, the people in my arena, in the association, that a ninety percent electronic know me.
Right, no, I know, we've had this conversation a few times.
They don't approach me on electronics. Not that I haven't learned a lot about electronics, I have, and I'm very capable.
But you are not, you are not the resource.
No.
You're not the IT person?
Ma'am, I got him to get a BizHub. Yeah, I'm feeling pretty accomplished with that right now. We had one of those in the middle of Afghanistan. We might wanna think about one.
Oh, that's funny.
To correspond with a commissioner in Kosovo all the time she's gone for two years, she oughta be able to do something. She called in on the meetings from overseas.
That's right.
Yeah. Had to keep her engaged if she wanted me to bank her money at the banking process. You know? Basically, uh, it, it works out really well, but you, you just have to, you have to be, the main thing is whoever you get in there, they've got to pay attention to the veteran. That's where it's all at. It's helping the veteran, not telling him no, not telling him yes, just helping him. See what you can do for them. I'm not the judge or the.
Quite a bit of handholding when it comes to that, yeah.
And if you're in the VA system, you know that.
Just being able to listen.
And just having patience with the VA alone. I mean, you know, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a quiet mark.
Electronics doesn't help that out, Keesha, I'll just let you know.
It doesn't, you're right.
It might in the fiduciary world, but it doesn't necessarily help.
Yeah, that, that comes with the end process, Mike.
I know.
It's initial.
It still has to go onto somebody's desk, and they still have to answer, and so.
But I'm still happy when they come back in and say, look what I got in the mail.
Right.
It's been four years, but look at this. I got a back check for four hundred thousand dollars. Well, I think you're happy. You know, I mean, this, that happens. So, basically, I'm just saying that, you know, if you stay with it.
Yep.
If they stay working with you, you can help out a veteran in a good way. Otherwise, some of, I, I don't get any bad calls, I don't get any hangups, I don't get any cuss words.
And I, and I.
I don't get any of that kind of stuff. I did a GA, but I don't in VA.
And I'm seeing some, I'm seeing some younger clients even. I mean, you know, I've had, yeah, this week of thirty-six, so, you know. Yeah, but typically, you know, they're in their fifties to sixties, yeah, yeah.
But I didn't want to be the reason, if I couldn't be doing this job, I didn't have the support that I had with, with the supervisors over the whole years I've been here. They jumped in and done a lot.
Even giving you a smaller office.
I'd do a lot of move back across the whole, I'd do it anyway, but common sense.
That's a perception.
All that crap I got in there?
The top square footage is probably me.
Very good.
Oh, we appreciate it, Mike.
Well, Mike, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you, Jody, appreciate it, yeah.
Any other questions?
Nope, I don't have any.
All right, Mike, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
All right, very good. Well, thank you.
Any questions until next year.
All right.
All right.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
That's right.
Yep.
Yeah, you're fine, yep, yep. Thank you.
All right. Tomorrow, we've got facilities. We kick off zoning, IT, GIS, open a little bit lunch, and a recorder, and then open. So, pretty full morning, and, uh, more time for discussion. I can't wait. Jake?
Yes, sir.
Let's get a motion to adjourn this thing.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Remy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCollum?
Hi.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jake.